Call to order, a meeting, council work session for Wednesday, October twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. Please call the roll.
Mayor Coos.
Here.
Mr. Preston, Mrs. Lorenz, Mr. Byers, Mr. Robers.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
We have no public commenters tonight. The reason for the work session is to have a, a pretty good informational update on where we are with the underpass project and options for going forward on the project. No decision making done here, obviously, it's a work session. This is done in, in the effort to give council as much information as possible, give the public a little bit of heads up of, of what might be possible going forward and time to digest before we take it up at the council. So I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And council, we have quite a bit to cover this evening. And so I just want to do a brief introduction of what to expect, so you know what's on the horizon for the next hour or so. And so what you can expect this evening is a presentation from the town of Normal staff regarding the underpass project. It's been a while since we've talked about it publicly and now is the time to bring you and others up to speed on where we're at with the project. And this evening, we're going to spend a little time talking about the whys and what it is in terms of the underpass project and the how in terms of how to get the project done. We are going to, I, I want to give you a, you know, honest heads up. We are going to present to you for about an hour before we turn it over for council conversation and council discussion. And so there's going to be a lot of information covered and it's going to be basically a team effort. So I'm going to invite Mr. Otto, Mr. Hune and Mr. Duffel forward. And I think we're, they're all going to be prepared to share information as they go through the presentation. And then when their formal presentation is done, I have some wrap up comments to link what you just heard to our variety of plans. Council, as, as just a reminder, the underpass project has been a topic of discussion and a topic of our strategic planning processes since about twenty thirteen. It has been a priority project since twenty fifteen. So we're talking about a project that has been a decade in the making and we have, again, a lot to share, a decade worth of discussion that we're going to summarize into an hour because we have, you know, we, council's aware that we've been working to get funding and things like that. So you're also aware that we went through a bidding process and we've gone through value engineering. So much to bring you up to speed about in terms of the status of the project and then again, the hows and the whys. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Otto. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. The project team tonight is pleased to provide this update to council. We're going to start with talking about some of our project goals. The underpass project, as Ms. Reese mentioned, has been over a decade in the making with much conversation and much work with various stakeholders and project partners throughout the years. The project itself is fairly complex, so wanted to provide this update to, to you on where we've been and then talk about how we get to the next step in the project. So for our project goals, when we started, was to provide safe, grade separated crossing that provided for pedestrians and bicyclists. Essentially, the old Constitution Trail at grade crossing, it's no longer viable, given the high speed rail improvements that have been through Uptown Station. And so the circuitous route that has to take folks down to Linden Street for the trail is, is not something that is desirable. We want to provide an ADA compliant design, something that enhances accessibility in Uptown and at Uptown Station. Provide safe access to the South Amtrak platform. Right now, customers have to traverse down to Broadway or Linden to cross the tracks and there are often trains there. Often is not possible to cross to catch a train on the South platform. Eliminate the barrier between Uptown South and Uptown North and also promote economic development through job creation and Uptown North normal development. Here's just an illustration of some of the, the challenges we face in Uptown Normal currently. On the right, you see a, a student trying to cross a stop train. This is a condition that happens every day in the town where we have trains that stop and, and every once in a while, we get unsafe behaviors from students. And so the behaviors that we're trying to address include crossing stop trains, climbing over stop trains. And the grade separated crossing will, will address that. On the left, you see the, the pondering individual trying to figure out how to get across the tracks. That's a, that's a frequent condition when trains pull up to the North Platform or the South Platform where trains are blocking access and crossings. Here's another illustration of limited access to that South Platform. This is the crossing that would normally be used by Amtrak customers to get to that South Platform. And we often have, Amtrak train could be stopped at the North Platform and we could have a freight train coming on the, on the South track. So it's a, it's not an ideal condition and a grade separated crossing would greatly enhance both safety and accessibility at this location. And the other project goal I mentioned, ADA accessibility, the project team was very diligent and methodical really in providing for ADA accessibility. There was a lot of thought put into this design to make sure we had accessible paths, both from the station, the Children's Discovery Museum, as well as the path that is proposed to lead down to the underpass itself. So we'll, we would be fully compliant and provide a, an accessible path throughout the project. So now, next, I want to talk a little bit about key milestones. The last time council discussed the actual build grant itself was in August twenty twenty two. The build grant was modified to provide for increased funding from the FRA. We upped it to approximately sixteen point one million at that time in twenty twenty two. Since that time, there've been various council actions. As you know, we've executed utility agreements and, and a C and M agreement. But we've also been working behind the scenes to solicit and obtain regulatory approvals. Those processes have been lengthy and required much conversation. So in April twenty twenty four, we got both clearance from the NEPA or National Environment Protection Agency for our CE approval, which is called a categorical exclusion. It is a approval essentially of the environmental impact of the project. We also obtained FRA design acceptance. In May, those two items allowed us to move forward with the ICC petition with the Illinois Commerce Commission to obtain permission. And with that order also came the obligation for funding. The rebuild Illinois funding and the amount of five million dollars plus the grade crossing protection funds that are proposed for the project. Both were obligated by the Illinois Commerce Commission order. Those two total six point two five million dollars. In June, with council approval, we executed an agreement with Union Pacific, which allowed us to essentially obtain approval for the design itself. In October, we had a design agreements come through council. And in November twenty twenty four, the town opened bids for the project. We'll talk a little bit more about those in just one moment. But the, since November twenty twenty four, we have been engaged in value engineering conversations. So let's talk a little bit about the project bidding. And again, I mentioned in November twenty twenty four, we opened bids. We did receive two bids for the project. One was from Millstone Weber LLC and the other from PJ Hair. The low bid for the project was thirty five point one six million. The low bid still exceeded our project budget and estimates. So with that, in December, we initiated what we call a value engineering process. The goals of the value engineering process were to essentially reduce the project cost. We wanted to identify elements that drove the increased design for the project, what contractors were seeing that led to the higher than expected pricing. And from, from those analyses, we were able to redesign selected project components to reduce cost. We did not want to sacrifice any of the project objectives or functionality of the project. We did remove some scope items that will plan to be done in-house by town staff over time. And then we also reduced the overall project footprint in the South Plaza. And we'll talk about each of those a little bit here in detail and some of the different elements that we modified to bring the cost down. So in the North Plaza, which is right out here in the Mark Peterson Plaza, is what we refer to it now. In that plaza, it includes a sweeping ramp that comes down to the underpass itself, in addition to a central gathering space that is, will be publicly available. In this area, we were able to remove some of the drainage elements. We had a decorative paved, what we called a runnel, was a drainage element in that area. That turned out to be really expensive. The contractors identified that as something that was very labor, labor intensive and very expensive. So we were able to remove those and put it in a more traditional curb. So it'll still function, but with a traditional curb. We also replaced some of the pavers. Most of the entire central plaza was proposed to be pavers, very similar to what you see on the circle now and throughout some of the non-walking areas in Uptown. But we also have examples of some colored concrete areas, the example being Uptown Circle itself, that, that look very nice and are not pavers. And so we felt this was a really good change that saved a significant amount of funding. Contractors have less labor and the, the concrete product is still very functional and it looks very nice. Like I said, the colored concrete, the, the concrete is actually called buff that is in the central circle. And so we're proposing to match what is out in the central circle and so it fits with the overall theme of Uptown. One of the other things we did was exterior stone, the limestone benches and other proposed seating areas. We switched that out for a cast in place concrete that will still be very functional and very similar in appearance. So we feel that was a nice switch to, to save some money. Now moving to the South Plaza, which is over by the auxiliary station on the south side of the tracks. The South Plaza itself is designed to be an amphitheater, designed to be a public gathering space and also have a sweeping ramp that comes around and linking, links Constitution Trail with the existing trail that goes by the police department. One of the things we noticed was a lot of, just, it was just a big area. And so we felt that we could reduce the footprint while still preserving a lot of the functionality that we intended in the first place. And one of the areas was on the north side of the auxiliary station, the old, some people say South Amtrak Station. That auxiliary station has a nice area to the north and we were proposing to reconfigure the ramps and the stairways and some of the pavers and railings. We found that by eliminating that, we were able to save a significant amount of funds and still have that space both programmable and accessible. The next thing that we looked at is the existing conditions right up against the existing Parks and Recreational, Parks and Recreation Building. This was part of the overall footprint that we were, we removed while still preserving the functionality. So the bus drop off area was, used to be in this area that we were proposing. We feel we can still have a bus drop off area here and preserve parking by eliminating some of this work. So that was just a small change that we felt had a big impact on the amount of actual concrete that goes on the ground and that was a good cost savings for us. The amphitheater itself, the proposed stairway, one of the major changes was one of the stairways against the tracks. We eliminated that, which allowed us to save the pavers and the paving area in front of the South Amtrak Station, as well as a significant amount of cost, labor, brick, lighting, things like that. Some of the lighting we modified. The original plans included RGB lighting and a DMX controller, which essentially was very similar to the lighting that's in the Children's Discovery Museum climber that could have been controlled with lights. But we also found with the bids, it was just very expensive. So the, the area is still planned to be well lit and thoughtfully lit, but we just won't have that functionality with the red, yellow and, and changing light colors. Another thing, we talked about the paving. Pavers essentially are removed from the project. The only pavers that are going to be in the project are up by the circle to match the existing aesthetics around the outside of the circle. And then the rest will be the buff colored concrete that matches the actual cistern uptown center circle area. We talked about plants in this area. All the trees will be planted as part of the contract. Those are important to be incorporated into the contract because they require preparation. The underground preparations to allow for healthy root systems are important to install as part of the overall construction project. It's not something that could be added later on because of the extent underneath pavements, retaining walls and various other improved areas that we cannot dig up. But we, we did remove some of the plantings. We found we had a significant cost from the contractor for planting shrubs, perennials, small plants. And our Parks and Rec staff is very talented in both design and installation and feel they can add those in-house at a much lower cost. That saves a lot of money on the contract. We did adjust the seating footprint. Originally, we had planned a path to go through the area in green, the central area here of the South Plaza. That was eliminated as part of a cost savings project, so as lo, as well as one tier of seating. But it will be a nice area. Right now, we have a, a sloped area in the center circle of Uptown Circle that is well used and loved by the community for gathering, listening to music. And this will function in a very similar way. It'll be grassed and gently sloped up, so we'll still have a amphitheater feel and have a lot of trees, we hope, similar to the circle. And a lot of shade for enjoying music, gatherings, things like that. So this is the value engineered South Plaza. This is a rendering. You see the, the sloped grass area in the back that can be used for seating, as well as we maintained the front tiers of seating. That central area is, is essentially, the use is unchanged, just the design is a little different. For value, we removed some of the central sidewalk going through the center of the grassed area. And here's an aerial view, this is looking north. You can see the tunnel at the very top of the project. You can see a lot of the trees, the, we preserved all the trees that originally intended to go into design. We felt that was a very important aspect. We didn't want this to be a unwelcome, you know, gathering place that just baked in the sun. So that was an important aspect of our design is that it was very functional, very welcoming to people as they come and experience this, this South Plaza. And here's one more rendering of the South Plaza, just, this is looking west towards the Old South Station. The underpass is on the right. You won't actually be able to see the box underneath the railroad tracks, it'll be buried. But the, essentially, the retaining wall that you see will, is unchanged. The stairwell that used to go along the tracks is removed, but otherwise, the functionality remains the same, the same ADA accessibility, the same path that leads up to Constitution Trail and the old Amtrak Station in the South Platform. On the north side, we have the, this is a rendering, it's actually an older rendering that does not include some of the elements and I'll explain that. The programming and the configuration of the North Plaza didn't change much. What did change is right in the, along the paths, you see glass guard whale, guard rail. That is changed to a metal guard rail, again, very similar. It'll be the same color as what we experience in Uptown Circle itself. I believe it's an Umbra gray, so it'll be, it'll, it's designed that the theme and the feel is very, very much Uptown. The path goes down, you can see on the right side and then swoops down to the east to go to the underpass. And a lot of trees, again, in this plaza area to, to make it feel inviting. Those are new patio area outside what is the Children's Discovery Museum, that'll be programmable space for the, for the Children's Discovery Museum. And those are the main changes in this rendering that, that we're proposing. This is a rendering for the underpass itself. In our value engineering, we were very careful not to change any of the structural or aesthetics of the actual underpass itself. Lighting is extremely important in the underpass. We want it to be well lit, inviting. Some may remember that the underpass itself is about ten feet high, or it is ten feet high by twenty feet wide. So it's a significant structure, but it's also designed to be welcoming. We don't want it to feel constricted or congested with both pedestrians and bicyclists as they utilize it for traversing underneath the tracks. So it'll be well lit. The mural that you see depicted in the, in the rendering is just a placeholder. We don't know what's going to go in that space quite yet, but hopefully some sort of artwork eventually. But that's, that's another programmable space and another neat feature of this design is of the underpass itself, both the lighting and the visual appeal of it. So after the value engineering exercise, we put together revised plans, revised specifications and requested that the two bidders, both Millstone Weber and PJ Hair, provide revised pricing based on the new plans and specifications. So in June of this year, Millstone and PJ Hair provided revised pricing. The low bid was provided by Millstone Weber, once again, in the amount of thirty two million sixty four thousand three hundred, which constitutes about a three point one million dollar savings from our value engineering exercise. So significant amount from the original low bid. The funding sources that we're proposing for this project include all the federal funding sources, including three million from section one thirty, sixteen point one six million from our federal build grant. The Illinois Commerce Commission is six point two five and the town of Normal shares about fourteen point nine million for a total project cost of around forty million dollars. So what's the next steps? We have modified build grants now. If the FRA has provided a, a grant to us that modifies both the time schedule in that grant, it gives us an extension from what we originally proposed in twenty twenty two and then also updates the project cost for, all those revisions are incorporated into that build grant. So should council choose to move forward with the project, we, we would have a planned construction start date in November of this year. And we're looking at a substantial completion date of June first of twenty twenty seven. We anticipate a little over eighteen months of construction for the project itself. Did want to highlight the fact that time is of the essence. Our build grant funding by congressional, congressional mandate does expire on September thirtieth of twenty twenty seven. So right now, we are, need to move forward, should we choose to do so. The build grant extension of September thirtieth, our understanding from our federal liaisons is non-negotiable. The monies have to be expended by that time. So now I'll turn it over to Mr. Hune to talk a little bit more about funding.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. As Ryan mentioned, we're at forty point three million dollars in, in total funding that's needed to complete the project. This slide here kind of takes us back to where we were prior to opening the bids and doing the value engineering for the construction contracts. Originally, we had committed twenty eight point three million to the project. That includes the funding source you can see on this slide and the town had contributed about two point nine million dollars of secured funding for the project. We are now at forty point three to make it complete. Those funding sources are locked except for the town's piece, of course, and that's a local share. So to, to complete this project, we're going to have to increase the town's contribution by an estimated twelve million dollars. So we, we have a gap in, in the project. We, we are accustomed to these things happening. When you have major projects that have escalating costs in terms of inflation and so forth, we need to find a way to solve it to keep the project go forward. Cash or debt is always on the table. We have on occasion solved problems with additional cash in projects. However, a twelve million dollar gap is not solvable in terms of our cash position for the town. So we are going to be proposing a, a financing to manage that gap. Our current debt right now is fifty seven million dollars, that's our geo debt as of October this month. And the town has a very long history in terms of using debt financing to satisfy capital projects, certainly ones for economic development, Uptown renewal and so forth. And I'll cover that in a little, in a couple more slides. I do want to give you a little bit of history on our debt position. This slide here shows a chart that shows our outstanding debt by year. You can see from, goes from twenty, two thousand and four to our last close twenty twenty five. And you can see it, it ramped up significantly from twenty, two thousand and four to about twenty ten. There were eight bond issues that occurred during that timeframe. Those were all attributable to the Uptown renewal process, which many of you are very familiar with. Between twenty ten and about twenty fourteen, we did a few refinancings, but no, no, no new money issues. Then we did go back to the bond market back in twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen. That was two different bond issues. One was there to help finish up some Uptown money for contributions to those projects and also the fire stations that we're doing for core services. So the town has done, been involved with debt markets for a very long time. It's managed well, we've been good timed on those. We, we fund our projects that are going to develop the economy, we fund core services. Looking at this, this overall debt chart, you can see that we sensed our peak in twenty sixteen, over ninety million dollars. We had our regular, regular payments made against principal. You can see a, a big dip there in twenty twenty three, that's where we paid off eight million dollar bond issue, the twenty twelve bond issue, early payoff for that. We've had kind of a decreasing debt position since that peak in twenty sixteen. Again, we've used that in, in many ways to satisfy budget needs and, and long-term planning for kind of development and big capital projects. And we see this as being no different. And just a final history on the Uptown development, that from two thousand and three, the town issued ninety two point five million dollars of debt for Uptown only. The use of those proceeds were, were very significant for very significant projects. You can see from the slide for yourself where most of that, those funding went. Obviously, the Marriott Commerce Center and Parking Deck took. Obviously, the Marriott Commerce Center and parking deck took a lot, a lion's share of it. The College Street parking deck, the building we stand in right now, Uptown Station. We did significant water and sewer renovation for Uptown because the sewer lines, the water lines were 100, 150 years plus years old, had to be replaced. We built the Children's Discovery Museum. We did a bunch of road work in the area, which also includes the circle. And we contributed to the Hyatt Hotel, a lot of site prep, land acquisition, and of course, one Uptown Circle with a billionaire across the street. So significant money used to help promote economic development, very successful development in terms of the Uptown area. So we were very accustomed to dealing with debt issues and, and funding, funding projects that way. Final slide on, on debt stuff. This, this slide shows our actual cash flow, our existing debt, and what the cash flow would be if we were to propose, if you were to approve the $12 million bond issue. The blue line shows we kinda ramped up in '26. We, we peaked in at 2030, and then again, we started having kind of a downward sloping debt curve. A lot of that's by design in terms of our, our debt issues. We kinda manage the portfolio to have the longer debt a little less when we can, and the payoff starts to sloping downward. And the effort there is essentially create some capacity in our debt model, to be able to load in some debt there. The orange line is what the debt would look like if we were to do the $12 million bond issue. You can see all the debt is paid off by 2041 of the existing debt. If we do the $12 million bond issue to support the completion of this project, that'll go to 2050 for a 25-year bond, and that just shows those payments there. Now, this is a snapshot in time. You know, we're going to issue more debt in the future. That's part of our process to, to help the economy, to help keep the area alive and, and vibrant, and to solve, and to help with core services. So don't think that, oh great, we're done by 2040, we'll, we'll continue to issue debt. But right now, this is a snapshot in time in our, in our debt position, and shows what happens with a new debt issue. In terms of estimated terms, again, we're proposing a $12 million bond issue, a geo bond issue, referred to as a new money issue. We're targeting 25 years as the maturity date for that. Right now, rates are around 4.3 to 4.5 in those out years. I hope to see those get a little better, and it's likely they will, as, as we're seeing some nice things from the Fed. We will probably close this bond issue sometime in April '26, so next fiscal year. And then the estimated annual payment for the $12 million bond issue for 25 years at those interest rates is about $870,000 a year. We are also considering doing some refunding of our existing debt. You know, when you go to market for a debt issue, it's, it's a fair amount of work, it's a fair amount of cost, and it's a fair amount of complexity. So if we're going to the bond markets, we, we, we take a hard look at our current debt issues. We're always reviewing those for possible refunding opportunities. And right now, we have several bond issues that might be ready to be refunded. We'll issue it in April '26, so we're hoping to get that done also as part of this debt issue, if it is approved. So paying for the debt issue. We, we don't have current sufficient revenue sources to absorb that $870,000 payment that long term. So we'll need, we will need a new revenue source to support that debt. We're proposing to increase two separate taxes to, to support the debt issue, the own debt issue. Food and beverage, we'd like to take from 2% currently to 2.25, and hotel, motel tax from 6% to 8%. And I'll go a little more detail on both those revenue lines, or both those taxes. So food and beverage, again, from 2% to 2.25, 25 basis points. The history here is we passed the first food and beverage tax for the town back in 2002 at 2%. It remained unchanged since that time period. If we do move to that 25 basis points, it'll generate $440,000 of annual revenue that we'd use to support the debt service for the $870,000 debt payment. You can see to the right of the slide, the comparison of where our counterparts are at. Most are all at 2%. Springfield has no food and beverage tax, and champagne is at 2.5. So we'd be just below the highest, but kind of in, certainly within what other, other ones are at. Hotel motel tax, kinda the same analysis. Again, we're going, we're suggesting to go from 6 to 8% at 2% increase. Historically, the first hotel motel tax for the town was in 1984 at 1%. It changed, it increased 2.5 in 1996, and then it went to, to its existing 6% rate in 2003. If we go from 6% to 8%, that gives us additional $580,000 annual revenue. And you can see how we compare it to our current counterparts. Most are around 6 to 8%. Gildberg is the highest at 10.8. Peoria's got an interesting situation. They have an 8% tax on hotel motel tax. However, they have what is called a hospitality zone, where they have a business, a business development district tax. So every, every hotel in Peoria charges 8%. The ones in, in the hospitality zone will charge 9%. So if you combine both these funding elements together, we generate about, just over $1 million, $1,020,000 for both hotel motel tax and food and beverage tax increases. We have an estimated debt service payment of $870,000. It's, it's, it's certainly prudent and standard practice to have some kind of coverage ratio when you're developing earmarking per se, a revenue source to support a certain debt source, you know, kind of income to expense or, or revenue to debt. A minimum coverage ratio is 1.2. We structured the tax increase and the estimate of 1.02 million. That's not quite getting to the minimum, but it's at 1.17. And, and this is in effect ju- just good standard practice for our debt modeling, and the rating just like to see that we have, we, we can comfortably manage the debt service when we go and talk to them about it. And there's always probably revenue fluctuations in those sources. Now, typically, they do increase. Food and beverage is pretty standard in terms of its, its vitality for increases. Hotel motel can be a little more challenging sometimes, so we feel comfortable with both those sources kinda splitting, splitting the half and putting it right around a little over $1 million. So just to summarize what we're, what we're saying here, we have a $12 million gap in the, in the, in the funding we need to finish the project for the Uptown Pass. We're proposing a $12 million bond issue at a 25-year term right now. We would close the transaction in April '26. Annual debt service payment of $870,000, and we propose to fund that annual debt service of the $12 million bond issue through an increase in taxes for food and beverage and for hotel motel. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Duffield to talk about economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Hune. So just quickly, as we look at the economic impact for what the underpass will, will end up looking like, I wanna kinda set the stage a little bit with a few definitions. As we go to the next slide, we'll see that there's, there's three impacts I want you to look at: the direct, the indirect, and the induced. The direct would be probably the most important impact when looking at what the economic impact of the underpass would be. The direct impact is going to be the immediate effects of the construction of the underpass, while the indirect and the induced impacts will be, your indirect being supplier to supplier, or business-to-business purchases, maybe suppliers for, for materials here locally, and then your induced impact being increased money coming into the economy through purchases at restaurants, retailers, so on and so forth. So mind go to the next slide for me, Andrew. So as we look at the, the impact of the construction of the underpass itself, it looks like i- i- it's approximately going to create about 186 full-time jobs. Now, it's important to note that, that this job creation is not permanent job creation. It's a one-time impact for the construction life of the project. So as the construction of the underpass comes to completion, those jobs would, would most likely go away, hopefully to other construction projects in the community. The next impact I'm gonna look at is the $19.4 million contribution to our local economy. So that's, that's something that's being directly, that's going directly into our local economy through our, our local GDP, so the value of goods and services that occur here locally. If you look at the indirect and the induced impacts, you still see an additional job creation of about 65 new jobs through that, and with, with an additional influx into the local economy of about $6.9 million. So when looking at the, the underpass construction itself, it's, it's, it does show a significant impact here locally. Next slide please, thank you. Excuse me. So the underpass isn't the, isn't the only economic impact that, that would occur here. So, you know, I, I view it in kinda two lenses, is you have the construction of the underpass, and then you have what the underpass allows the Town of Normal to do moving forward. And so, so for me, it's really a catalyst for development for Uptown South. And so you, you look at what the, what the economic impact for that looks like, while it's hard to put in an exact number on what Uptown South could be, because it could truly develop into a lot of different things and have different components that ultimately would change the economic impact. These are really critical. It's kinda set the stage for what Uptown South could be. So it, it does provide essential connectivity that, that ultimately will help drive development on the south side of the railroad tracks. The, the, it physically links Uptown North to Uptown South. Uptown North, as we all know, is a vibrant and thriving city core that, if it can be extended to Uptown South, I think would provide an attractive, attractive place for development to occur. With, with Trail West and Trail East being the last two pieces of development to, to needed to occur in Uptown, the north side of Uptown is, is pretty limited as far as new development opportunities go. So the underpass then allows for the connection to open up eight new acres of development for, for, for more mixed-use development. With, with the, with the vibrancy of, of the north side of Uptown and what Uptown South will be with the connection of the underpass, it's, it's a very attractive place for developers to want to come in and, and do mixed-use development. Those types of, of designs and that types of housing really call for people to want to live there and spend time there and shop and eat there, and, and hopefully, ultimately leading to the Town of Normal continuing to, to, to have infill housing occur. As I mentioned, it's really difficult to put a number to what Uptown South could be, but the Uptown South master plan does, does call for 490,000-plus square, square feet of, of new development. So that includes residential, retail, and, and public institution space, all of which will add significant economic impact to the Town of Normal. You look at the retail and restaurant space for, for Uptown and the, and the sales tax that provides to our community, Uptown South would just be an extension of that. And, and then you look at the, the increased, the increased EAV of what Uptown South could be as well. With those mixed-use facilities, the, the EAV currently being very limited with it being town-owned, would, would only grow substantially. And then the last thing you think about is, is tourism. So with our Uptown event space being so limited now, the underpass, like I said, like I mentioned, connects it to Uptown South. So you have the, the opportunity for an expanded footprint of, of local events and communal spaces that hopefully can provide more comfortable space for, for these events to grow and continue to bring people to Uptown Normal.
Thank you, team. Andrew, you wanna move to the next slide? So, so basically, a, a number of comments that I wanna make just to summarize and try to capture some of the discussion here this evening before we turn it over for council As I mentioned, this project has been about 10 years in the making in terms of identified as a priority project for us. We, staff that have been here quite some time have, you know, we're familiar with our various plans, our comprehensive plan, our strategic plans, and the like. So, so what I would like to do is just talk a little bit about how this project fits in with our strategic plan and our comprehensive plan. Staff, Mr. Hune, and Mr. Otto, and, and Mr. Duffield have talked about the project specifics, and the real priority of the project has been, of course, as we know, to address rail access for passengers, rail passengers, as well as safety improvements and pedestrian improvements. But I wanted to talk really about, just for a few minutes, about how this links to our various plans. We have, for two decades now, for 20 years, we have talked about Uptown Normal and its impact. We've seen the growth in EAV from the Uptown Normal TIF. We are proud of its vibrant, our vibrant central business district. We are proud of our exceptional quality of place and of our ability to provide an attractive area for businesses to thrive and successfully recruit their employees to come work here. So, you know, from my perspective, in order for us to continue to have that success, it requires us to move and change and invest and be visionary and strategic. The, and these strategies started over 20 years ago with our Uptown renewal. I was at the table, this table, when, and actually, table at the old City Hall, when the municipality issued debt and entered into major construction deals that resulted in Uptown Station, the building we're currently sitting in, Marriott Hotel, Hyatt Place, One Uptown Circle, Heartland Bank, Fiala Brothers Brewing, Medici, Maggie Miley's, CVS, Uptown North Apartments, and others. Our first investment was in infrastructure, in sidewalks, the Children's Discovery Museum, the Uptown Circle Roundabout, and Mark Peterson Plaza. Transformational impactful projects can be expensive. Uptown redevelopment was expensive, as you saw from our, our debt discussion. We know this is a big project with a big ask, and I don't take that lightly. And the project team does not take that lightly. But as we've stated, we believe this underpass project is a transformational project that serves as a catalyst for Uptown South development and to invest public resources into, and allows us to invest public resources into an area that's infill, compact, and urban. It isn't sprawl. It allows us to make better use of existing spaces, promoting development of the urban center. This is in addition to the stated benefits of addressing accessibility and safety issues for railroad passengers. A rail crossing solution, specifically in underpass, has been identified as a priority project in our various strategic planning processes since 2015. Getting us to this point involved the Federal Rail Administration, IDOT, Illinois Commerce Commission, Union Pacific Railroad, and all of our project team members. And our comprehensive plan adopted in 2017, where over 1,700 individuals participated in that process, helped guide us to this project. Has a lot changed in the world and the nation and the local atmosphere since 2015, 2017? Absolutely. Almost countless things have changed. However, there are still some key components of our comprehensive plan that are relevant to this discussion, in addition to the points already made by the team. I'd like to close out the staff presentation with a few points before turning it over for council discussion. As it pertains to the comprehensive plan, I wanna highlight just a few drivers of the plan. There, we have a section called "Infrastructure and Public Safety" in our comprehensive plan, and, and I'm just gonna quote one of the items in that section. It directs us to ensure the town's public rights of way and public spaces provide a multipurpose, connected, physical space for movement and travel, public and private utilities, and other appropriate public purposes. In the Health and Sustainability section, there are a number of categories, a number of paragraphs, one, two, three, four, five, six different paragraphs that, that I think are relevant to this type of project. First, promote compact infill development. Promote programs that encourage walking and biking. Develop and maintain robust bike and pedestrian network. Implement policy and design strategies that prioritize safety. Design public spaces to promote mental well-being and accommodate mental illnesses and disabilities by promoting access to green, active, social, and safe spaces. In the Humanitarian and Social Aspects section, one of the, one of the highlights and recommendations indicates we should consider the needs of all residents when designing public places and programming. And then, as one would guess, the Community Identity and Public Places section specifically talks about placemaking. And it says, reimagine public spaces to become unique spaces. And I, Mr. Otto did a great job explaining the, the plan on the south side of the tracks with the amphitheater and access. So I'll close out my comments with the following message from the Vision 2040 Plan. We've already adopted the Vision 2050 Plan, but in the Vision 2040 Plan, I believe these words, "Not written by me, but crafted by those who worked to, to put that plan together." Best capture why this project is so important. Normal's identity is strong and distinct. Normal's task is not about creating a community identity, rather, it is about recognizing the identity that already exists and building on it through programming and urban design. The town's role as a steward of public spaces allows it to have a palpable impact on our sense of place. Public spaces are where that sense is often strongest, because public spaces are used by everyone together. The best public spaces have a quality that is hard to define, but easy to recognize: a sense that they are unique, rooted in their surroundings, the products of this community, and none other. Normal is full of such places, such as Uptown Circle, that stand out as examples of thoughtful, timeless, sustainable design on a human scale. timeless, sustainable design on a human scale. These places did not happen by accident. And that's, that's the quote from the plan. So, speaking on behalf of the project team and staff, is our hope to design and present a public space that's memorable, interesting, appealing, sustainable, and of course, a valuable asset for the entire community. So, again, it's not just about building a, a tunnel, about building an amphitheater, about building public places though. This conversation is also about paying for it. And again, we don't take that lightly. And it's our history, if we're going to, as an organization, consider a debt issuance linked to a project, um, we also then consider the revenue stream to pay for it. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Kous.
We, excuse me, getting over a cold here. Uh, we have a lot to talk about tonight and I think you, uh, finished out the comments on, on a very good point. Uh, and, and for us to really take a look, uh, at some choices we have to make going forward with this project, um, but really, really understanding the why that we're considering this project. And I think, I think that's a very important part of the piece of this. We've got some tough financial decisions to make. We've got some tough timelines to work with, but we really need to understand the why we're doing this project or why we want to do this project. And I've said that many times, you've heard me say it. You don't just live in great places, uh, you work to make great places. And when you go to a community and, and you go, wow, what's going on here? It's because people did some heavy lifting, made some very tough choices, um, financial and otherwise, uh, to make that place the unique place that you identify as a wonderful place. And I think we have a long history of doing that here in the town of Normal and I think it's important, um, that we continue to do this. We hear from the business community, uh, most recently that, uh, the community needs transformational projects, uh, to really make it stand out. And I think this is one of those projects that, that accomplishes that. So, um, having said that, I think we get into the, the gist of it here and have conversations and questions. Uh, I'm going to start with, can I get a clean x? I got a, um, a couple of questions on, on the underpass construction itself. Changing from a lot of that, uh, um, pavers to, uh, concrete, does that give you concerns about drainage in that, in those lower areas?
It is not. The, the pavers themselves, um, were actually to be underlaid with concrete, um, so it was more of an aesthetic look, um, that the, the project architect was going for, but we feel that the buff colored concrete provide, uh, similar experience and, uh, have no drainage concerns at all there.
Okay. And, and the other thing, I think you and I have talked about this, uh, prior, uh, one of the issues on, on the increase in costs, uh, to me seems like, uh, there's a certain amount of risk in this project, given the timelines that the Union Pacific has put on us, uh, to operate and probably affected the overall bid. Would you agree with, with that assessment?
I would agree. The overall risk associated with the, with the contract was difficult to estimate, uh, until we actually got to the bid environment itself. Um, I think the proximity to the railroad, the tight timelines and turnarounds, uh, the windows that we need to construct this, those all helped drive the prices higher than, than estimated.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Um, I've got a number of questions, but I want to focus on specifics of the presentation. First of all, thank you for putting this together and will this be shared with all of us in an email following the meeting, the, the presentation?
The PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yeah, we can certainly share the PowerPoint. We can also probably post it to our project, um, forum, the page on the forum.
Okay. So, um, if, if you could, and this is probably directed toward Mr. Hune, how does the project cost increase from the bid that we've received for the contractors that have come forward, um, interested in doing this, uh, to 40 million? Because the bids came in closer to 32 million, so, and I do know that we have spent some money on work for design and infrastructure, um, before the project, but how do we get the additional 8 million in the project cost above the, the bid quote?
I could take that one. The, the overall project budget that, uh, is the 40 million includes both, uh, detailed design work, utility relocations, construction engineering, um, all those factors are in that number. So it's not just the project bid that we're looking at, it's all of the other aspects of the project that have to occur to allow for construction.
Do, do we have a total of what has been spent to date to get the project to this point? Um, and if, if you don't have it now, if that could be shared later, that would be very welcome.
Right, we're down to get that, I'm thinking it too, so we can get that to you for sure.
Okay. Um, and when we're talking about the, the quotes, I noticed that, um, the two contract bids came in relatively close. So the initial bids were publicly known so that when it was re-engineered, both interested parties had access to the prior information that might have driven hair to, to lower their, their cost. Is that an accurate estimate?
I can't speak to how each contractor arrived at the number they did for the value pricing. They both priced them independently. Um, each contractor had access to the total bid amount, but not the detailed, uh, bid tab or the unit costs associated with that. But each contractor priced it independently and submitted their value engineering pricing.
And, um, when we're looking at, um, refunding existing debt, how does that, uh, align with the idea of going to the market for, for the, the 12 million that Normal needs to get this across the finish line? What would happen if that is a part of the process?
Um, it, it saves us some time and, and effort and expense to, to load all that into one budget, one, one bond offering. Uh, we don't need the cash right now and I think rates will become better over time. Plus we have a couple of call dates on our existing bonds that we can't, um, refund until we get to April. So we, we have some flexibility between now and then to, to be thoughtful and mindful of where the market is. Uh, we, we could separate those things right now, uh, and if we needed to, which, which we are prepared to do if we need to. But right now, we've set a kind of a timeline of between now and April to get the bond issue done. And April is the, the last time we could do it because at that point in time, two of the bond issues that are, that are available for refunding become callable in those dates.
And when you're talking about refunding some existing debt, you're not speaking of prolonging the debt that we have, uh, but possibly reducing the amount of our debt service payment, correct?
Correct. All of our refundings historically and the ones we're proposing to you shortly, uh, for the existing debt that's, that's eligible for refunding, we always keep it, uh, the same terms. We never extend the debt. Uh, we simply enjoy a better interest rate on that debt model.
Um, and I appreciated the history and timeline of the bond issues and, and what it supported. Have we retired any of those bonds to this point that have been funded with some creation or increase to existing taxes? Or, or are we still carrying the, the current tax structure that we have to support, for the most part, all the debt service that was itemized?
Yes. Um, right now, the, the, as you're aware, the council always debates all the taxes for the debt service on the existing bond issue. So we have revenue sources in place to support all those debts. Uh, two of the bond issues are, or at least two for sure are supported by TIF tax coming in. And we structured the debt to have that eliminated when the, when the TIF ends. So the answer to your question is, we, we have current funding for everything. We have the same tax resources for the current existing debt that we have now. Uh, and then it's essentially, you know, TIF income and then other property, other revenue sources in general fund to support the debt service.
So, um, if, and when we retire some debt that was, um, tied to specific tax issues, what happens to that tax revenue? What's the earmark of the dollars coming in on that?
Well, the only, only debt we have that's tied to a specific tax revenue is the debt issues that are supported by TIF, um, increment. And when the TIF increment ends, we have structured the debt to reduce down to a point where we can absorb that, that loss in revenue.
Since we're earmarking a specific tax for this specific project, what would it do if we were to sunset the tax increase, um, to coincide with retiring the debt for this underpass project?
That, that's a, a, an option that, that we, we could consider. Um, you know, essentially we're, you know, I, I don't hate to use the word earmarking because we're, we're, we need to increase our revenue capacity in general fund to support new debt over a period of time. But if your suggestion is to have those taxes sunset after the maturity of that debt is done, that, that's something that the council could consider.
Um, and you're talking about the anticipated revenues generated from these taxes gives you close to the 1.2 coverage because the debt service that you're mentioning, is that focused only on the principal, I mean, on the interest? Because bonds are usually, you pay interest over a number of years and the principal repayment happens at maturity. So is that, um, estimated annual debt service, is that principal and interest or interest only?
It's, it's both. We, we do structure some debt to have principals come due later on because it might be efficient in terms of, of what we can get in, in interest rates. Uh, for this debt cycle, um, we, we chose to amortize the debt at a kind of a level debt service. So we are paying interest and, and principal in a, in a, in a proportion that keeps us at about 870K per year.
Um, would we, if, if it's, i- if the collections are in excess of the amount needed for the debt service, will it be put and dedicated into a sinking fund for that bond issue?
We're not planning that this time, no.
So it would, it would help support the other expenses of the town?
Correct.
I, I think I'll stop at that point because my other questions are related to some of the use of the, of the underpass and I'll defer to other members of the council that might have some more questions.
Are there other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Lorenz.
I've got three. Does Public Works have any concern about the maintenance of this underpass?
Uh, the structure itself is a 75 to 100-year lifespan, so, uh, we would anticipate the annual maintenance to be minimal, um, especially right out of the gate when it's brand new. Um, like any other bridge structure, we will have ongoing maintenance, um, related to sealing and inspections, but, uh, we would not anticipate any major concerns related to the overall annual maintenance of it.
Flooding?
No, the project, uh, project designed, um, to have drainage addressed by a lift station, uh, that'll be built on the southeast corner of the station. It'll be something that'll keep the, the station dry. It'll have all of our standard, uh, protocols for maintaining the station and making sure everything stays dry and drained.
Second question is, um, do police from a public safety point of view have any concerns about, um, situations that may occur in an underpass that are conducive to happening in an underpass, um, that might put people, make people feel uncomfortable? I'm kind of ref- making a reference to oftentimes under viaducts and tunnels, um, is where some of our unhoused community members will take refuge. So, um, not painting them as dangerous necessarily, but people can feel a level of threat, um, to a situation like that. So has that been discussed and how would, how would, um, our police officers address that?
I can't speak directly to law enforcement and how it might impact their operations, but I can address the design elements that have been incorporated by the project team to, um, to, to address those issues. We have, uh, we have good lighting. Uh, the space is designed to be well lit both in the daytime and at night. Um, the space we anticipate to be well used, so it's not something, um, that will be, uh, unoccupied, um, over time. And we also have provisions for security cameras in, in there. So I anticipate that law enforcement will be able to address any issues that would not be, um, precluded by those, uh, design measures as well.
Will they, or will we, as a, as a municipality, make it illegal for them to stay there?
I anticipate yes. We would not allow, um, loitering in that area.
My last question has to do with economic development. Um, what is the ROI on this? And maybe you can go back to your, some of those slides I think might.
Sure. Yeah, it, you know, it's, it's difficult to, to paint a specific ROI to the project because it hasn't happened yet. I think this project is specific, specifically unique to the town of Normal. Um, you know, I think the two, the two numbers I did highlight, and I want to highlight it again, is the, with the job creation and, and, uh, the local contribution to, to our, our own GDP. Uh, you know, 19.4 million, that's, that's a significant number. And I think, you know, what I mentioned too is, is the opportunity that this provides for Uptown South. Uh, that, that number we, we can't quite get to yet because of the different variables and development that will occur there. Uh, but you know, when you look at what, what Uptown, the Uptown TIF has done over its lifespan, you know, the, the number that I have here in front of me says that, um, you know, when we created the Uptown TIF, the, the EAV was 14.67 million and over, and today it's at a value of over 56 million in any EAV. So that's a significant, uh, growth that we've seen in, in Uptown itself. And I think Uptown South would just be an extension of that.
Is Uptown South part of a TIF?
No, not currently.
Okay. Do we have any projects waiting in the wings of showing interest in Uptown South?
Yeah, there's been no specific projects, uh, that, that are waiting, waiting on us right now. We have, we have seen some interest from developers, um, mentioning that they would be interested in, in locating an Uptown South, um, you know, once, once the underpass situation is, is resolved.
So nothing really even in a, in a hopper of sorts?
Um, noth- nothing, nothing planned at this moment, just real high-level conceptual discussions with prospective developers. Next step would be when we're, when the town is ready to go into a more formal master planning process to determine, um, you know, what kind of, uh, public improvements need to be made on the south side of the tracks and, and things like that. And so we haven't gotten, gotten into those specifics yet.
So it's this slide and another slide, I think, that you went through? Or is this the only slide that talks about the economic impact?
This side, this, this is the slide with the most specific information.
Okay. So 186 FTEs, temporary.
Construction jobs, correct.
And, and dollars and cents, that's 19.4 million dollars of business generated from that project.
Correct.
Um, and then the part that can't really be quantified is the additional indirect and induced impact.
Right. Yeah, th- those numbers are projections of, of what the impact would be, you know, whether that, those materials are purchased here locally, uh, and the kind of the demand that it creates for those businesses and, and similarly with, with the induced impact.
Will there be requirements for local purchase?
I can't speak to that, I'm not sure.
That's all I have.
Mr. Robirch?
Hi, gentlemen. Thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, very, very informative, um, and, uh, learned, learned quite a bit about the, the plans for how, how everything is projec- projected to look. Um, one of the concerns I had, looking at the north side of the, uh, tracks in particular, is to do with the gradient, um, that you were looking at there. Um, I'm just thinking, it's going to rain, uh, people are going to be out there on bicycles, wheelchairs, baby strollers, all that good stuff. Um, the, with the pavers that were initially planned versus the, uh, concrete that's there now, is there any concern with the adequate abrasiveness of those in those conditions?
No, we would anticipate a similar type of surface either way with the concrete. We don't anticipate a, a, what a traditional smooth concrete surface would be, like you might see in your garage. It'd be more similar to what we find on our roadways or in Uptown Circle. We have very, the gradients would be no more than some of the gradients that you see in the Uptown Circle. Um, so because of the emphasis on ADA accessibility, um, the gradients are, are very mild, uh, compared to some of, uh, even streets you might see like Fell going north, um, towards North Street in Uptown. Uh, that sidewalk follows the street and is allowed to by regulation, but in this case, um, we follow a stricter guideline because we're not parallel to a street and we, we are limited to a, a certain grade that's, that's less than, um, than what you might see in other areas of Uptown as well.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks. I will, I'll have some, uh, comments and some thoughts later, but we'll start with my questions, um, this round. So, um, let's begin with, uh, actually what, uh, Mr. Robirch was, um, hitting on. I want to pick- So let's begin with actually what Mr. Robirch was hitting on, I want to pick up on that a little bit. Is there, there are no stairs on either side, north or south, in the proposed design that would go grade level down to the underpass, back up the other side? Is that correct?
There are stairs proposed on the south plaza, and I can go back to one of the renderings. It's not shown super well in this rendering. The, there's a stairwell that runs from what will be the, and I don't know if I have a pointer here, I might.
In the lower right-hand side.
There you go. So there, there's a stairwell that runs from the underpass level, the amphitheater level. It will come up right here and then run up to the Parkinson level gradient. So there will be stairway access from the, essentially the southeast corner of the Parkinson lot down to the, both the trail and the amphitheater level.
Okay. How about on the north side?
On the north side, there, we're proposing no stairs there.
Okay. Is, is there concern, not just the grade, but I mean, rain certainly in the winter, that you're just going to have like a downward sloping slips, you know, slippery, slippery slide, I guess? You know, it, is there concern about that aspect of it from a safety standpoint or any other?
Not at all. Like I said, mentioned earlier, the gradients that we're proposing are fairly insignificant compared to some sidewalks in the community. They all meet ADA accessibility guidelines and with proper snow and ice control that we have in Uptown, I, I have no concerns. Did want to clarify, there, there are stairs in the north plaza in one little section. It's in the northwest corner, moving towards, from the ramp down to Uptown Station, sort of the portico that goes into the northeast corner of the Uptown Station. So that's the only stairs really in the, in the north plaza. But, but in, to address your concern about safety, no. The way the project's designed, I have no concerns about safety.
Okay. Another question for you, Mr. Otto. Did I see right that the timeline had a planned construction start date of, I mean, the month that'll begin next week, November? Is that right?
That's approximate right now. The contractor, we've not made a contract award, and so until we have that information on when the contract is awarded, we can't do a hard start. We would like to start in November though.
Okay. And like how, I know we are up against a tight timeline as this is presented, how, at what point does the feasibility really get questioned? If it's not November, but it's December, is that something that becomes questionable? If it's, you know, I mean, talk me through about how tight of a tight timeline, where are we at on?
That's a good question. The, the timeline is, is tight. We, a, a delay from a November start could give the contractor pause about continuing with the project. We've not had those conversations, but the timeline is certainly a concern. We need to get going. The, the project, as I mentioned, is risky. It has a certain element of risk for the contractor in terms of both seasonal delays related to the winter. We anticipate, we anticipate those delays with whether it's traditional construction stops for a month or so. In central Illinois, it just always does. But that's built into our timeline right now and the contractor, as it stands, feels that the project is, is doable and completeable. Should we delay, you know, several months, it could become a, a major concern.
Okay. That's, I'm glad I asked that. What, along those lines, substantial completion date per our, I assume primarily per our build grant is June 1st of 2027, is that right?
That's correct.
And if we don't meet that substantial completion date as a result of any kind of delay, what happens?
We have the flexibility of June to September, essentially is our flexibility. So we have a obligation to complete by September 30th, but we would target June to get that done to give us a little flexibility on the back end.
And is there a plausible scenario that September becomes a tight timeline and that becomes hard to meet? And if so, what's the ramification of that? I mean, do we lose the federal funds that aren't expended at that point or what, what does it look like?
That, there's potential. Some of those risks are unknown, depending on how much of the funding, what aspects of the project, there are certain aspects of the projects, aspects of the project that are funded with various funding sources. The underpass itself, for instance, would derive most of its funding from our grade crossing protection funds, while the build funds are more available to all aspects of the project. So there could be an avenue where we expend build funds first and then look to expend other funds as well, but, but we haven't necessarily explored that. We prefer to, to move forward with the proposed timeline, knowing that that gives us the most flexibility.
Okay. Have a question or two from Mr. Feen, then I may have one more for you, Mr. Otto, after that. But, Mr. Feen, if I heard you correctly, the proposed general obligation bond that we would be talking about with the two tax hikes to pay for those payments, you said, which I think a lot of us were aware, but we really try to get a minimum 1.2 debt coverage ratio on the income coming in over the debt payment and our projections for food and beverage as well as the hotel motel hikes would still only put us at the 1.17. I know that's, you know, kind of in the margins, but it is under the 1.2 that we'd be wanting to, wanting to achieve. Can you expand on that and what that looks like? How much concern will that cause? You know, what are the implications of what we're talking about in that regard?
Sure. It's, it's, it's tight compared to the minimum, but we, we felt it was prudent not to, not to overly tax those two, those two revenue streams. Plus, when we developed the, the 1 point, the 1 million to 20,000, we use fairly conservative estimates for revenue on those lines, so the actual revenue might exceed what we had as a projection. So I have a little bit of wiggle room there in that covered ratio.
Okay. I think my only other question, Mr. Otto, I'm going to come back to you, kind of taking this back high level. Can you remind us all here why it is that we are forced to be doing a grade separation to begin with when we have sidewalks at both Broadway and at Linden that are grade, you know, at grade like any other sidewalk at any other crossing anywhere else, you know, in this town and every other? Why has that, because clearly that has put a tremendous amount of stress on everything. I mean, you know, we're talking $40 million underpass that we barely have the time for to make work and it only happens if we raise two taxes and like issue $12 million of additional debt. Like, I think this whole thing's crazy. I'll save those remarks for later. Remind us all why the grade separation is mandatory in the timeline process of how that conversation all transpired.
The original crossing of Constitution Trail on Union Pacific back before the high-speed rail double-tracked the area, just to the south of Uptown Station is now a double track. It's now a double-track, high-speed rail corridor, various conversations, and I don't have the whole history on that. It's gone back several decades in terms of how we got to this point. But the underpass provides, the, the at-grade rail crossings are not ideal for both Amtrak customers, trail users. They frequently are blocked by stop trains, sometimes even by double trains. We have the picture earlier in the slides about freight trains, passenger trains. It's a heavily trafficked area and frequently citizens, Amtrak customers are unable to get across. The rail crossings themselves are not ideal. It's really a safety issue in terms of providing those crossings. And I don't know if, Mr. Reese?
If I could jump in, and I think Mr. Day might clarify a little bit too, but I, I just want to go back kind of the historical look back and how, how did we get to this point? I believe it was 2013 when our, our strategic plan and our work through the Illinois Commerce Commission was focused on an overpass. And it took quite some time to work with the Illinois Commerce Commission to go through that process. And at this table, the plan changed from an overpass to an underpass. And, and so I, I think that was around 2014, 2013, 2014, and then since, since that point forward, an underpass, or an over, an underpass has been our priority. Now, how did we start in 2013 or how, in 2013, how did we get to the overpass conversation? And it was because of the closed at-grade crossing that had previously existed, actually right out here at our, at our, you know, right behind us when, when the high-speed rail process went in. And Mr. Day, it looks like he's anxious to say something about this topic.
I always love talking. So if I understand your question was what happened to the at-grade crossing that we had had there for however many decades?
I was under the impression that we were mandated to a grade separated crossing for years now. Like that has been kind of the baseline for why we were talking over versus under, obviously it became under.
Yes. So under both Illinois and federal law, there's no mechanism to require an at-grade crossing at anywhere other than an intersection. So if you have a crossing at an intersection, then the Illinois Commerce Commission has authority to tell the railroad, no, you have to allow a crossing at an intersection, and there's a whole hearing process you go through there. When you've got something like here where it was not at an intersection, it was a mid-intersection at-grade crossing, that was entirely at the railroad's discretion. So there had been a at-grade crossing there for, I think, since the early 1900s when the trains originally came through here. And it wasn't until the building, the construction on this building started to progress that the Union Pacific Railroad said, oh wait, no, we're getting rid of the at-grade crossing. And there wasn't any mechanism for us to appeal that. So there can't be an at-grade crossing there unless the Union Pacific Railroad allows it and they refuse to allow any at-grade crossings. They've been getting rid of all of the at-grade crossings through the state. So that's what put us in the situation where we have to look at a separated crossing.
Let, let me add to that too. There's an issue and, you know, there, there was a long period of time, Mr. Preston and I was in the same camp as you were, why do we need anything like that? And, and the more educated I got on the process. It also has a lot to do with railroad logistics. Very, very often we'll have a freight sometimes stopped, not, not often, but sometimes stopped in Amtrak on the south platform. And when you take a look at that, if that Amtrak train is delayed 15 minutes, that affects the whole route, the logistics and, and the dispatching of that whole route has to change. So it's very, very important that we get on-time performance from the freights and from, from Amtrak, just from a dispatch standpoint in terms of the traffic. And very, very, very often, there are times when both Linden Street and Broadway are blocked and you can't, you can't cross either, either one of those streets. So some kind of underpass, overpass was required. And that's why it, it was kind of frustrating for us because it was never brought up to us. If you reflect back, it was not brought up to us until this station was already under construction. And I'm not sure what entity came to us, but they said, you know, where's your overpass? And we're going, what are you talking about? Because we assumed we were going to have at-grade crossing through the center where, where it traditionally was. But again, having studied and, and learned the situation, a, a, a crossing there would be untenable. It just would not work.
Well, there's not a, there's not an Amtrak train that goes on this, on our tracks that doesn't stop in normal. I mean, high-speed rail or otherwise, every single one that goes through.
Correct.
Stops at Uptown Station. So if you're saying that the issue is freight-related, I don't know, it just sounds like Union Pacific has caused a huge, a huge like complicated decade-long mess for the town in that decision to not allow the at-grade. But that's not what we're here to discuss. That train left the, left the underpass, you know, a decade ago. So I don't think you have any more questions for staff at this point, but we'll have comments later after others.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, team, for the presentation and giving us digestible information. I don't have too many questions, fewer asked already by my able colleagues. I guess, one of the topics Mr. Preston brought up was the coverage ratio. When does that actually become an issue? Or how would that ever become an issue? 1.17 versus 1.2 versus 1.23?
Right. It'd become an issue if, if the revenue sources decreased or had some kind of spike downward and then we, we would not have that revenue coming in as we expect. Our goal is to make sure that we have enough funding to support the debt and that, that is, that's important and that's to the benchmark of the coverage ratio is. Also, in going forward, those revenue sources will grow presumably, and then that coverage issue will get better in the out-years. So again, we're, we're being, we're being mindful and prudent in the best practice to have a coverage out the day, but it should improve over time for sure. But if, if we have a, a drop in revenue, then that would be problematic.
And that would be true of any of our funding on, for any of our projects.
That's the issue we deal with every year, every day.
So this is not unique to this project or this funding source. That's a.
No, not at all.
Thing we experience. And if 13 years of being on here and watching you guys budget, I assume it's a fairly conservative revenue estimate?
Yes.
In that 1.17. So I've, I've never seen you dramatically mess on an estimate.
Just on the conservative side.
And 13, and on the conservative side, I've seen you mess very conservatively. We usually outperform your revenue forecast. And then part two was, I was assuming that you're not counting for a large growth in those revenue streams.
A modest growth, but again, I, I'm not concerned about, we are at a minimum coverage ratio, but that is at day one and presumably we'll see, we'll see growth. And that debt service payment is static, it's not going to change, but our revenue will grow.
Right. Okay. Speaking on that, I'm going to hop around a little bit here. On the economic impact numbers, do any of those, were those numbers all related specifically to the construction of the underpass? Or did any of those numbers include any forecast of development on the south side?
It did not include any forecast of development. It, it was only specific to the construction of the underpass.
Okay. So when we're, yeah, you know, it's a, it's a good question, ROI, right? It's, it's always a good question to ask. But ROI, just like Uptown, isn't about the sewers and the streets and the infrastructure, it's more about what happened on top. So I assume this project would only pencil out increasingly better, assuming development happens on the south side. Am I, do I have that right or am I making stuff up that I shouldn't?
No, you're correct.
Okay. So on a, on a pure infrastructure project, right, we're looking at positive impact principally from jobs and wages and those, those being spent locally in our local economy. Did I understand all that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have any thoughts? I know that we're really not here for that. Do you have any thoughts, projections, ideas? And if you don't, I know, realize that's not really what we're here for, but I think that's partly kind of what we're concerning ourselves with is how does this perform for us long-term?
Sure. Yeah, I can speak very high level to what I think Uptown South could be with regard to economic impact and how that plays into what the underpass means for Uptown South. You know, the Uptown South master plan calls for significant development in, in Uptown South, right? So you have a significant amount of new square footage being residential and retail, both of which require construction and which, which leads, which would lead to new construction jobs similar to what we saw earlier, which would lead to more revenue being spent in the community. So then you have the, you have the construction impact from those projects, then you would have the building operations impact from those projects. So you look at the building owners and the revenue that they generate from leasing out to either residents or to business owners, and then you would have the impact of your retailers and your restaurants. And so the people who are, are living there, spending money there, who are shopping there and spending time there. And so there's, there's very, there's three, you know, very big impacts that aren't accounted for yet, but that would, that would provide a substantial impact towards the overall growth of Uptown South.
So a lot of upside potential, but we're not going to forecast, which is fair and, and reasonable. What I'm kind of surprised hasn't been mentioned anywhere in this conversation. Um, eh, what I'm kinda surprised hasn't been mentioned anywhere in this conversation, particularly when we're talking about development on the south side, is housing. I'm assuming, um, a couple of things in all of this presentation, and that potential is infill is our best, greatest, least expensive way to do that, and that would be part of our objective, I assume.
Yeah, housing would play a major role in the development of Uptown South, um, specifically what you just said, the in, the infill opportunity there, uh, would, would be a, a big impact.
Okay, and I'll stop, I know we're here to specifically talk about the underpass.
I, I'll just, uh, expand that question a little bit, we talked earlier about, eh, you, you had some high-level interest, uh, a peak, but I think it's fairly safe to say nobody's gonna take the next step until they know that there's an underpass.
Yeah, I think so, uh, you know, anec- anecdotally, I've heard from developers that the underpass is, is critical to the development of Uptown South. Um, you know, whether it's a barrier, the, the tracks, whether it be perceived, you know, you can walk a block or two around, or with a physical barrier, uh, eh, unfortunately, eh, it is an obstacle to development and, and developers see it that way. Uh, eh, for, for a lot of great reasons, Uptown is successful, and developers want to be a part of that success, and so the connectivity from Uptown to Uptown South is, is really critical for them when they consider investing in, in normal.
Mr. Phil?
Thank you, so I wanna take another bite at the apple, as it were. Um, so in the, um, budget and the bids that we have, is there any, eh, contingency that the contractors are building in to allow for the potential for, uh, change orders? Cause I know we had some surprises when we were doing some of the infrastructure, uh, construction in preparation for this project. Do you know if they have factored in the possibility of some surprises?
Uh, yes, we have factored that in, um, so we do have contingency, um, standard 10% contingency built into the project budget, um, so if anything comes up, um, we should be able to address it.
And, um, it wasn't shown in the, the pictures you displayed, but there was some discussion of that we currently have people stopping in this circle despite the sign saying it's not available for passengers, drop off and pickup. Are we still factoring in, um, an indentation in, in the, into that space so that it would allow for passenger drop off and pickup?
We do find, we do plan to change that, uh, to allow drop-offs at that area of the circle. Um, that was, um, by various ways, we came about that, and we, we do not plan to widen the circle in the area of the drop-off, we find that the existing width of the circle is adequate, um, mostly because the, uh, transit buses that used to traverse the circle every day now take a different route, uh, they no longer traverse the circle on a regular basis, which was a big, uh, issue for the drop-offs. The drop-offs did not allow the buses to get through, which created bottlenecks. Now that the transit buses are going a different way, they go west down Beaufort, um, that's not really an issue, and the, the existing width is capable. We will be having a wider lay-down, um, removing some of the chains there so that it's more, uh, convenient for people to get out, you know, right now I see people all the time, they, they're hopping over the chains, eh, eh, it's not ideal, and so we do plan to change that aspect where we have a larger, larger lay-down for folks to drop off in that area, plus, uh, obviously remove the signage that says you can't do it.
And Mr. Otto, on the south side of the tracks, so there will be an ability for people to drop off and, and to access back to the north, correct?
Correct, yes, uh, there'll be a circle driveway and a parking lot, uh, next to the current south Amtrak or auxiliary station, um, that'll be a new amenity for drop-offs to the, both the south platform, but then utilizing the underpass to access Uptown Station.
Um, it, this construction timetable is rather lengthy, what are we anticipating in terms of disruption to the merchants on the, the north side of the tracks? Because, um, I'm assuming that bulk of the, the construction and, and the digging and so forth is happening south of the tracks, but, um, what will be happening to minimize the disruption to our businesses in Uptown now?
The major impacts will be on the area of the circle adjacent to the Mark Peterson Plaza, um, that area will have times when it's closed off, um, could look very similar to some of our Uptown events, uh, Uptown tree lighting where we have certain areas of the circle that's, uh, cordoned off for brief periods. Um, the circle is not anticipated to remain closed for the entire construction period, uh, there, we'll try to keep it open as much as possible to, uh, make sure we get traffic flowing, uh, down Beaufort and around the circle, um, but there will be some minor impacts, but in terms of access to businesses, that will all be maintained at all times.
And in terms of increased capacity of, of opening up this space, um, do we know if we have excess applications for our Sugar Creek Arts vendors so that if, if we make available after construction is complete, uh, having the, the vendor space, uh, bleed over into the south side of the track and the amphitheater area? Do we know if we are already having an increased demand for vendors that are interested in participating in, in that arts festival?
Well, Mr. Otto's looking at me, and I'm looking at Ms. Wismann in the back, and she's nodding, she's nodding yes that there has, there, and I would say not only Sugar Creek Arts Festival, but other Uptown events, I'm sure could find ways to expand, but she does, she is nodding yes that Sugar Creek Arts Festival does have, uh, increased demand and, and requests for space.
And the capacity of the amphitheater space, is it changed by the modifications that have been made, or is just the seating modified with having more lawn space and less paved seating?
That's correct, it's just lawn space versus paved seating, um, so we did lose some paved seating, um, but we gained quite a bit of lawn space seating.
Um, in a similar vein, the, the travel time for somebody who is mobility-challenged and, and must confine themselves to the, the paved path, is that changed with these modifications?
That has not changed, no.
And the removal of the steps, uh, adjacent to the tracks, um, with that gone, there's a very real possibility that people will create a path there. Um, I know on the ISU quad, it looks like every time a student has created a path, it became a sidewalk, so is there an anticipation that, um, there will be some, uh, some recognition that if a path is created, it, it will, eh, work to make it, eh, safe and, um, not slippery by either putting in mulch or some gravel?
Uh, we did think through that aspect of the design as we worked on our value engineering process, um, you can see from this rendering of the South Plaza, um, there's actually a retaining wall as you come out of the, come south through the underpass, uh, where the stairwell used to be, you would turn right to go up to the auxiliary station, and that's now a large retaining wall, so, uh, we hope to minimize that, uh, will people still do it, probably, but, uh, we did think through that aspect, um, to make it more desirable for folks to use the, the paved path.
But it is still also possible for steps to be added at a future date at, at our own expense, and certainly not, um, something that needs to be financed over 25 years?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I, I've been highlighting stuff and crossing things out, but I think I got it all, thank you.
Other comments or questions? I think we are adjourned then.